I'll call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of December 12th, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as its successor agency to the ACIA and the Housing Authority. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Jack Tucey. And on behalf of the City Council, we would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and happy New Year. Roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Laval?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Potemponse?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
No, Mayor.
Department head reports?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director Public Works, four items. The ADA Ramp Project continues. We have three of six ramps will be completed by the end of this week, and Jordal anticipates being completed with the entire project by 12:31, so the end of this month. Also in the Third Street area, just want to make the community aware that the grease interceptor, the lobster trap is going to put in the street there. That will disrupt the traffic, you know, early part of the year when that happens. It's going to be a pretty large excavation, and I would anticipate the road would be closed for a little period of time while that's happening, while we get that excavation done and they drop the tank in there. There will be other routes, though, for them to go. The fuel tank project, it continues, and by the end of this week, the utility relocation, that was a large effort to get that done, but we've got that, will be completed by the end of this week, and then we'll now pull everything back so it won't be in the roadway, try to put the walkway back and order at least, you know, a portion of it, and then we'll be working on the hillside for the enclosure, you know, as we move into the end of this month and then into the next month. Public Works crews are getting ready for the winter as far as cleaning up. Right now, we're in the terrace, is cleaning up the rockfall and the areas that we have debris, in the areas with the drainage, and then we'll be in some of the other drainage around the community, making sure that everything's open and ready for any storms that come. And then we've got our new skid steer, which finally delivered the island, so that piece of equipment, brand-new shiny yellow, so that's going to be our go-to piece of equipment. I anticipate that because it has a very small footprint, but really it has multi-dimensional with the functionality that it has, with all the attachments we got. I mean, so it can work as a loader, you know, it can work as an auger, it can work as a broom, it can grind asphalt, it can jackhammer, all those attachments, and so that makes it better for the environment, for our crew to get out there and do the work quicker, more efficiently, but also that it has that small footprint, so when it gets in the road and we're working there, say with a water break, we're right there and still traffic can go around us, so.
Well, I'm glad you're excited about your new toy.
Yeah, very good purchase, the whole community should be. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Orin Karstafen-Harbormaster, just a short report for you tonight. Since my last report Tuesday, November 28th, patrol moored 167 boats for a total of 1,336 nights. Patrol warned or advised five individuals of Minnesota code violations, completed 131 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters, responded to 15 public assists, assisted the Coast Guard one time, and assisted the Sheriff's one time. Any questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
So you didn't get any new toys for Christmas for your department?
No new toys.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City staff. Captain Matthew King from the Sheriff's Station. Since our last meeting, we had 93 observations made by deputies, 46 calls for service, there were 15 vehicle stops, multiple arrests. We had arrests for felony vandalism, petty theft, stolen vehicles, trespassing, and DUI. As I said in the last meeting, we're going to have the toy drive or the Santa flyover on the 20th, next Wednesday. He'll be flying into the helipad by about 11:00 a.m., so if you're listening to this, please bring your kids out, and we'll be taking Santa over to City Hall to pass out gifts to young children. We have, so far, we have quite a bit of gifts donated by Sheriff's D Foundation, as well as a couple of private organizations are donating, and we also have a toy driver at the station, you have toys, bring them by, and IEX, actually now Maverick Helicopters is also collecting gifts, so we should have quite a bit of toys for that day.
Wonderful. Any questions? Thank you, Matthew.
Madam Mayor, Council, first, I just want to be able to thank Public Works for all the work that they've done with helping with the installations of the lights in town. Also, the fact that about two months ago, we've put my maintenance staff under Public Works, making it more efficient, that they're actually able to go out and work on some of these bigger projects like you'll see up at Joe Machado Field, cleaning the areas out. Over by Tremont Hall, we were able to get up behind, up against the hillside and clear that all out, cleaning that out and making it safer. With it being under Bob and Jeffrey, it's allowed it to be more efficient with the work, and so I meet with them once a week, tell them what I need, and they're able to get out there with a much larger crew than what I had before, and it's made the projects easier and better for us, so I really want to thank Public Works for taking that on. Youth soccer signups are continuing with Evaluation Day, being this Sunday at JMF from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We are tracking well to meet last year's numbers. We do still need a few coaches, so please contact the city for any opportunity to impact a young child's life through sports. Last day for Santa letters are Monday, December 18th. Drop off a letter in the designated spot in the Atwater Arcade. Santa guarantees that if you leave an address, he will write back, so remember to continue to be nice, because he is checking his list twice. That was for my son. Santa Claus is coming to town. Early this year, dropping off presents on December 20th. He will be arriving in Avalon at approximately 11:00 a.m., and anyone is free to come watch his sleigh approach. Santa will then visit the preschool and kindergarteners here at City Hall approximately around 11:35. Any leftover presents will be given out along with the Sheriff's Department toy drive to kids in need here locally. December 21st, we will be doing our annual holiday dinner to those in need with toys donated by Mavericks Helicopter, the Avalon Sheriff's Department in Southern California, Edison. The food baskets can be picked up at the Old Teen Center on Beacon from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Again, we would like to thank the sponsors who helped make this happen, Rotary Club, Lions Club, Catalina Island Company, Cat Beverage, and BBK for their generous donation. Also, look out, we're going to be doing a, we had such huge donations this year from CCR, Lowenthal's office, as well as just today, Rotary just got a huge donation, which they would like to move forward with us, to do a community dinner, and I've already got Megan on board, we're just choosing the date. It's going to be an open dinner for the community to wish them a happy holiday and a happy New Year, and so there'll be more coming out, so look for that within this week for the date and times, and have, come out as a unity and have dinner. Last but not least, speaking of a healthy, happy New Year, the Polar Bear Plunge, January 1st at 11:30 a.m. on Middle Beach. Afterwards, after you cleanse your soul there, you can join us for coffee and pastries on the beach, and if that wasn't enough of a shock to your body, you can join the Catalina Swim Club at 7:30 a.m. at Casino Point. Just jump in, or you can go and do the mile swim. Any more questions?
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Last month, some code enforcement stats for you. They issued 161 citations, they responded to 15 emergency calls for service, 16 animal control calls, they issued 15 red tags, and they were able to coordinate with Public Works and a recycler to barge off 12 abandoned autoettes, so that's great. This, yesterday, or actually this morning, it's been a long day, I met with LA County Regional Planning along with our environmental consultants for a pre-application counseling meeting discussing the expansion of the landfill, the vertical expansion project, and it went really well, so that was awesome. County planning was there, Public Works, Fire, and Environmental Health, and it was all really positive feedback. We've got our work cut out for us, but they seem like great partners that we can work through with the environmental and planning process. And then last but not least, we have a request for proposal for collection of our city receptacles around town. It closes January 9th, and it is posted on our website at cityofavalon.com.
Great, okay, any questions?
I have one quick question, Jocelyn, not anything that you were just talking about, but the community survey?
Yes.
Because there was, I know in a summary, it came out and it kind of showed in a table, but it didn't come out and exactly say that we would be considered a disadvantaged community, but the numbers bore that out. Are, have we been designated a disadvantaged community since then? Is there paperwork to do? Are we going to be labeled that?
There's different criteria that different granting agencies use to come up with that label, so we feel with the numbers that came back, the majority of the grants that we apply for, that we would fall in that category, but there's nothing that declares you that. Each granting agent might have a different category of what, where you are above or below that calls you disadvantaged, so we can't say it across the board, but we know that the ones that we went after, yes, that's where we fell, we fell within that category.
Okay.
I know, working with Edison, Edison had some different language than some of the other grants, so we are looking, trying to extrapolate with what we have to give to them to see if it would fit.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm sorry if this is like completely off-topic, but there was a couple of things that came across my eyes that I was like, oh, we would be perfect for this, and I combed through that report, and I was like, okay, it pretty much says that, but so, so it's just kind of a matter, whatever grant you're going after, you have to deal with their language and their criteria.
Yes, we just have to have, which is what the survey did, is have reliable feedback to give them to answer that question. So when we apply for the grant, we say, yes, we are, and here's the backup for that.
Right, okay, so if something is ripe for Edison, then I can just supply them with that report and just say, look, here's some numbers, see if you can make this work.
And I think we sent that to Selena, right?
Yeah, I sent the survey report to Selena.
I sent it around to a couple people, too, just because something came across AQMD, you know, about, you know, charging stations and stuff, and I was, so anyway, all right, cool, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And how are we doing on the survey that's online right now?
That is not my baby.
We'll address that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Visitor-driven revenues through September are currently available on the city's website. October will be posted later this week, but as a preview. TOT for the month was down 5%. Again, that's still ahead of where we had budgeted. You can generally think we had budgeted down 20%, so we're in good shape from a budget standpoint, but it does appear that those TOT revenues are plateauing, admittedly at a much higher level than pre-COVID. Cross-channel warfage was up for the month of October, 4.2%, more to come on the others. Business licenses were mailed out yesterday and today by finance staff, so I want to thank them for their hard work mailing out all those invoices. Those will be due January 16th, that's a Tuesday, it's the Tuesday after MLK, and it's our next meeting day, so if you did not receive one in the next few days, please feel free to reach out to the Finance Department, and we'll make sure you get that invoice. I guess I'll leave this, also a reminder, dog licenses, we have new dog licenses for 2024, so if you do have a dog, you need to have it licensed with the city, so you can reach out to their code or the Finance Department to get that processed.
It's $10 for spayed and neutered, and 35 if it's not spayed and neutered, correct?
That is correct. Unless there's any questions?
A question, may I, if we can just look at, we got a FOIA request this week regarding a topic, and I wondered if there's any programs the city can look at utilizing that would allow for easier search than what MS Outlook allows for search, because it's a frustrating search engine in that sucker, and would love to be able to pull those reports quickly for you guys, rather than having to search through tons of email to get the requested topics, especially this one is quite a heavy one on correspondence, so I don't know that it'll be done in time for the request itself, but if we can look at that in the future and see what the pricing would look like for that.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you.
And we do have the chief online, he is over town, but I believe he's online to give his report, so I don't know if Matt needed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm at the League of California Cities Fire Chief Leadership Seminar. We are at 1,072 calls for the year, going to be a record year again, and then we'll see most of you on Monday to watch the fire, listen to the fire webinar on fire insurance. And then I just wanted to tell everybody, we are moving away from our City 2, our low-band, City 2 fire frequency, Channel 2. We're still kind of in the testing phases of the new radio system from LA RIX with the three towers across the island, so if anybody listening has a scanner, they probably haven't heard us for the last week and a half, so if you want to bring your scanner by the station, the guys are learning how to program scanners so they can continue listening. And then, once it goes live with LA County, we'll kind of put it out, once, I don't want to put out till we go live, and there'll be other channels associated with it as well. And then I just want to thank Dave, Devin, and all the staff in the office for the Christmas party.
Yeah, all righty, well, you have, enjoy yourself at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, and just skip the Department Head Report, didn't I, once again?
No.
I mean, I've talked about it, just, how come you fluster these sort of times when I look at you?
Okay, so a few things. Tonight will be our last virtual meeting, as it's set up under AB 361, so good news, bad news for that, very sad, but the rest of us aren't so sad, I guess. And then it's also the last City Council meeting of the year, so 2023 has flown by, it feels like. Couple closings, just announcements for City Hall, will be closed December 25th and December 26th at City Hall, and then Monday, January 1st. Other than that, will be business as usual. Dave Hart mentioned and thanked Public Works for the decorations. I also want to recognize Dave Hart and his team for everything they did to get that, all that up. It was a lot of work, they were out there constantly moving things, changing things, everything looks great. Part of the idea of this, a year or so ago, and we said that as well, it'll motivate other people to start, you know, decorating and keep up, and it seems to work, because I noticed there's a wreath on the Harbor Master's office, so they've actually put up decorations for the first time in a while, so thank you, I know. Orin had very little to do with that, but it's up there.
We're just waiting for the Sheriff's Department and county paramedics to put up a string of lights.
Yeah. And then, so our short-term rental survey is out there, as the Mayor noted, it's, so far, we have received 124 responses. We'll keep pushing it out there, pushing information out there. It's a quick survey, please go out there if you have the opportunity. As soon as I bring that back up here, Devin, I'll be able to say, it's cityofavalon.com/survey, we'll get you there, but as soon as you join our, go to our website, it should pop up for you initially, so please get on there and do it, we want to hear back from everybody. I, too, would like to thank everybody for all the work they did on the employee holiday party that we had last weekend, and particularly thank Stephanie Campbell for preparing and ordering recognition for all our 10, 15, 20-year employees. This was a catch-up, so the 10 to 15 year, we recognized 15 to 20, and then 20 and over, so each year we'll do this, is the plan for those employees that are reaching those milestones, and it's great to have so many long-term employees, and I know, you know, I think they appreciate it, at least getting recognized that night, so thank you for Council, they could attend, everybody enjoyed it, and thank you, Megan, for everything she continues to do for the city, so I believe, I believe that is it, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Scott?
Yeah, my video's not working, so you're stuck looking at my big head picture, and all I have to say is, along with David's discussion about AB 361, for next year, if a council member needs to attend remotely, you need to let the city clerk know in advance so that that address can be listed on the agenda, and you can then continue to participate remotely, you just have to, one, have the agenda posted at that location, and if any member of the public shows up, you have to let them participate at that posted location. And that is it, and I will see at least one of you tomorrow at the LA Division Holiday Party, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, okay. Councilmember reports?
I'll go first, since mine's real quick. I also want to thank Public Works for the great job you did with the decorations. It just looks so nice out there. And then I was notified today that I've been appointed to Environmental Quality Policy Committee with L.A. California Cities, so I'm going to miss Community Services, but this is a new, a new interest, so.
Not a lot for me this time either. I did miss the Christmas party, and I was a little jealous of the pictures. You guys looked great, and you enjoy, you deserve it. My family and I made it up to Big Bear to have my brother's Remembrance Day, and that was beautiful, amazing. We had a lot of Islanders up there as well, we ended up like 45, 50 people there, I don't know how we fit in the house, but it was a lot of us. It was beautiful. And then also Felicia de la Virgen de la Lupe, today is the day the Virgin Mary appeared in front of Juan Diego in 1531, and our community celebrates it every year, and they do such a wonderful job, and I believe it started at 5:00, so should be right now.
Yeah, I saw them, I live on Wiltley, so when I was coming, leaving to come here, I saw them down at the bottom, all queuing up there by the casino archway, I was like, oh, we're going to miss it. But, yeah, not a lot for me, I'm still working behind the scenes on a bunch of the, trying to get a dispensary, a recreational dispensary here in town, because, you know, Matt's like, oh, TOT is down, warfage, and all this kind of stuff. I just want another revenue stream so that we're not so dependent on TOT and warfage and all that stuff, so I'm forging ahead and doing all the research and getting all the numbers and all this kind of stuff, and I really want to make this happen inside a year. I think it would be a really, really, really good thing financially for this town. I'm really looking forward to the fire insurance webinar. I'm really curious to see what the Insurance Commissioner has to say, because that's been a major impact all across California, and if there's anything we can do to help people here, it would be amazing. And I'm taking off to go to Seattle again, I have family, and, you know, but I'll be back around for Christmas and all that stuff, so happy holidays, everyone.
And what time is that webinar on Monday, the fire one?
It was mid-morning, I think, yeah, wasn't it?
1:00 p.m.
I attended the Gateway City's COG meeting, which was at the Downey location this year of the Columbia Memorial Space Center, which I had never been to before. It's a pretty amazing little spot, not too far from the boat. If you get a chance to check it out, it's pretty amazing, and they're also working on fundraising for another building, but they've got some really great displays. I think I found a new romance with engineer desks, so just throwing that out there in case anyone needs to buy me a Christmas present still. It was a great meeting. One of the interesting things that came out of that meeting was that they are working on renaming what will soon be the West Sana Ana branch of Metro, and there were a couple of names on there that were quite beautiful, that I thought, there's, they're down to 12 names now that you can go and vote on, on Metro's website, but the two that stuck out to me, one was the Tongva Station, and the other was the Tongva Branch, and the other one was the Calafia Branch. So if you know, if anyone knows about California mythology and Calafia, it's kind of a cool nod, I thought maybe they could do a Tongva dash Calafia, that's my vote, but anyway, some cool names on there to check out for sure, named after people throughout the region, and also some state and historical significant names, so kind of a cool thing to put your two cents in on. And then had a meeting with the CPUC regarding the general state of funding for broadband and where we might fit in, and I believe I may have another meeting with a couple of them next week, so I'll let you guys know what I hear back from that when I do, but this is in anticipation of both looking at the CASF Fund, which has come around annually, and then also the BEAT Funding, which is in the rulemaking process right now. Did ask them during the rulemaking process to make boating and waterways part of their consideration for residences that they've never done before, so we'll see what happens with that. Wanted to say thanks for being told thanks so many times to Public Works, to the city recreation team, to the Love Catalina team for all of the money and effort and time put into the city. People that don't ever walk up to me and share comments with me have walked up to me this week and been so impressed and thankful, so thank you guys very much for all of the hard work, the wiring. I heard there were several trips to the hardware store for extension cords, it sounds exciting. So thank you guys for continuing to do that, it's, people are taking notice, and it's cheering, I think, a lot of people up this season, which is always great to see, so. A couple of notes on that, that I just wanted to share, one regarding the fire insurance and also water rates. We received an update from Norris Bishden on water rates, which was frustrating in the terms of what may be coming down the pipeline, literally, from that, and just wanted to make everyone aware that both the Supervisor's Office and Assemblymember Lowenthal have reached out regarding their concerns with the rising in costs and the lack of availability of insurance, and the rising in cost of water rates, and are keeping aware of the situation as well. And then was just asked by Jim from Love Catalina to make sure to mention the winners for the businesses for decorations, so congratulations to the City of Avalon for getting first place. Nicely done, guys. Very cool. To the Community Church for getting second place, which was great, and then also to the Metropolitan Marketplace for getting third. Very cool to see the businesses getting involved just as much as residents, and if you haven't driven up Tremont Street yet, I highly recommend it, it is so lit up in the evenings, it's a lot of fun to see. I haven't seen it that lit up since I was a kid, so it's really, really cool to see.
It's cool from above. It's, to look down into it, yeah, it's really cool.
Good recommendation.
Yeah, but when you're their neighbor, your kids are like, why aren't we like that?
And last but not least, just a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a good New Year to everyone, hoping that we can keep coming up with a lot of good solutions. Oh, and also, I'm running for Council again officially, and I'm on the ballot, so I thought I would mention that. Sorry, forgot about that. There you go.
And so is Yessenya.
Yep, so are you.
And so am I. And so am I. And Daniel Feltz is also running for mayor, and Ole Olsen is running for City Treasurer. Do you think that's it, right? Okay. Okay, I don't have anything to report. Oral Communications, this is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Nothing going on with you over there, Devin?
Aye.
Okay. Presentation.
So we do have one from Southern California Edison. Is Tracy on? Do we know? Okay. So I don't know if we had to give her access or not.
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Here we are.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, are you guys ready my presentation, or do I need to present?
We're not seeing anything, but...
No, we anticipate you'll be presenting.
Okay, let me pull it up real quick.
Sorry. Matt's trying to pull it up right now, though.
Okay.
There goes one minute.
There is, I think I could pull it up also if needed. Okay. I see, is that my screen or your guys'?
Looks like you have it up.
I, I have it pulled up, so if you direct me to the next slide, I can move it that way.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll go ahead and just get started. Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. My name's Tracy Dagnan. I'm with Southern California Edison, and I'm here tonight to present SE's Annual Gas Safety Presentation. So, next slide. Most of you know that here on Catalina, SE not only delivers electricity, but we also provide the water and gas utilities as well. So tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some gas safety tips and reminders. Next slide. On Catalina, we deliver a propane air mixture that is designed to mimic natural gas. It is delivered on a pipeline system that is installed, tested, operated, and maintained according to strict standards and guidelines used by SE required by local, state, and federal agencies. SE conducts routine patrols, visual ground inspections, and we have a cathodic protection system installed to prevent rusting and corrosion. And because of these things, system failures on the gas system are extremely rare. Next slide. The propane gas system consists of two types of pipelines. There's mains and service lines. The mains are the large pipelines that carry the propane from the plant out to the service areas. In some areas, the main pipeline may be marked by signs that contain general location and contact information. Service lines are the pipelines that run underground from those mains to your meters and your homes and your businesses. Okay, next slide. Because most of our gas pipeline is underground, it's very important that you call dig alert prior to conducting any digging activities. This includes any projects on your own property, so if you're planning to start a project, you must call 811 two full working days prior to digging to allow SE personnel to come out and mark the pipeline route for you. It's also very important to know where your pipeline route runs throughout your property so you could avoid building any structures over the top or planting any trees. Excavation must be done with hand tools until the gas line is found. If you accidentally hit a pipeline, please call SE immediately at our 800 number specific for Catalina, which is 1-800-367-8851, and then we could come out and inspect the pipelines for any damage. Okay, next slide. Customer responsibilities. This slide shows where SE responsibilities end and the customer responsibilities begin. All piping from the gas meter to the residence or business is the responsibility of the customer, so it's important that you also have your pipes inspected periodically for corrosion or leaks, and then make the necessary repairs if any unsafe conditions are discovered. Okay, next slide. It's also a good time to test your appliances regularly, especially now with the cooler temperatures. We're turning our furnaces back on and our gas appliances, so you could call a local plumber, and they could come out and assist in inspecting and making repairs if needed. Again, pipeline routes and meters must be kept clear of any structures or other obstructions. Okay, next slide. So how to recognize a propane gas leak? Propane is an odorless and colorless gas, so we add a chemical odorant called mercaptan, which is help, is used to help identify gas leaks. Some say it smells like rotten eggs or sulfur. Other ways you may be able to detect a gas leak is by a white cloud, a hissing noise, a frozen area on the pipeline, bubbling if it's underwater, any kind of flame or anything coming from the ground or pipe. Propane is different than natural gas in that it's heavier than air, so it tends to settle in lower levels of the buildings. You may end up noticing like the smell is closer to the ground because of this. Okay, next slide. If you suspect a leak, get out of the area immediately and warn others to stay away. Do not open the doors or windows, just get to a safe location. If you're outside, move into the wind and away from the gas. Eliminate any ignition sources such as your phone, your lighters, motors, electrical switches, anything else like that, and do not try to turn off any of the equipment. Next slide. Once you're in a safe place, call 911, and then call SE to provide a description of the leak and its location if possible. Okay, next slide. So your safety is our priority. If you have any questions, please call SE Catalina Island Service Number at 800-367-8851, or visit the website www.see.com/catalina. Both of those are specific to Catalina issues. Like I said, with Southern California Edison, this is the only location we have gas services, so it's very important that when you're calling in any kind of incident, you use that 800 number so that you get somebody who is aware of what we have here on the island. Are there any questions? That's all I have for tonight.
Council, any questions?
Stacy, just, sorry, Tracy, just confirming, that is a 24-hour number then, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
All right, that's all I had.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to the consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar. Item number one, approved minutes from the November 28th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Item two, approved total expenditures for November 20th, 2023 through December 1st, 2023 totaling $1,161,841.20. Item three, receive and file the fiscal year 2022, '23 Development Impact Fees Annual Report. And then the following item is, on the consent calendar is for council acting as a housing authority. Item four, adopt a resolution approving Housing Authority Successory Agency Annual Report for Fiscal Year '22 to '23. The next item is on the consent calendar for City Council acting as a successor agency for the Avalon Community Improvement Agency. Adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving a recognized obligation payment schedule for '24, '25, and successor agency administrative budget for fiscal year '24, '25.
I'll move to approve items one through five.
I'll second.
And I just have one question. So, on the, does the school pay us development impact fees?
I don't know if they do. I would guess not, but I'm waiting to see now from Matt. The answer is no.
Okay, because it's kind of listed here. I saw that it was list, where did I see the school? But, because they don't have to come to us for anything, right? They just, oh, public and institutional.
So, they receive their own development impact fees?
Okay.
Yeah, so they have another, there's another set of them just for school sites.
Oh, all right, thanks. All right, thank you. Okay, that was all I had. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number six?
Item number six is the cruise ship annual report for year ending December 31st, 2023. Matt's, Matt has a brief presentation on this, and then we'd ask council to receive and file the cruise ship annual report for the year ending December 31st, 2023.
Good evening, council. The first slide here is just a breakdown of the cruise ship scheduled versus arrivals, as well as number of passengers, the occupancy percentage of those vessels, the amount in cruise ship warfage, and the amount in Measure H warfage that's collected. All that information is what was outlined in the policy as what needs to be provided on an annual basis. Just to touch on a few highlights or to explain a few of the numbers, as you can see, in quite a few months, the occupancy percentage is over 100%. And how that comes to being is each vessel gives an occupancy count, generally assuming a two-passenger occupancy for each room, but in theory, a family of three could all share one room, and so then you have three passengers for two spaces, and then that's how you get over 100%. So you can see in the summer months, the vessels do tend to have more passengers. How it works for the city is we collect based on the, the manifest passenger count, so whether or not they disembark the vessels, not relevant for the, the warfage collection. It's just based on how many passengers are onboard the vessel. So you can see Measure H for January, February, March was still at the 50 cent per passenger rate, and beginning in April is when it went up to that $1 per passenger rate. The warfage for the entire year was $5 per passenger, so that's a portion the city gets to keep. So we had 132 vessels scheduled and 113 that ultimately arrived. Some of those scheduled got rescheduled, and so they end up appearing twice in that count. I didn't go through to try to eliminate those double counts, and then some do get canceled and are unable to reschedule. So the next slide shows a breakdown of the number of arrivals and the average occupancy per vessel. So you can see going back to fiscal year 1314, we had just shy of 100 vessels arriving. 1617 was our highest in terms of just number of vessel counts. We had 116 vessels arrive in fiscal year 1617, and then in '22, '23, we had 113 vessels arrive. So you can see the number of vessels, other than taking out for the COVID years, and so fiscal '20, '21, and '22 were all at least partially impacted by cruise ships. We lost a quarter's worth in '20 and '22 and didn't have any in '21. So you can see the, the number of vessels are about the same, but what's changed is the average passenger count per vessel. Prior to COVID, that was hovering around 2,400 passengers, and, and since COVID, it's, it's gotten close to an average of 3,000 passengers. That has more to do with the, the nature of the ships that are arriving than the occupancy of those ships, and, and by that I mean the, the average occupancy of the vessels that were arriving pre-COVID were 22, 2,400 passenger ships, and we now have a couple of recurring ships that have a stated occupancy over 3,000 passengers, and then some that are close to that, that with the, the triple occupancies can get over 3,000 passengers. In fiscal '23, the, the largest passenger count we had on any given ship was just over 4,000 passengers. So even though the ship's occupancy was 3,300, there were 4,000 passengers on those vessels. The next slide is a breakdown of cruise ship warfage revenue. On the left, it's in terms of dollars, and then the line is breaking it down as a percentage of the harbor's operating budget. We did increase the warfage, so in 1314, it was still at the $2.50 per passenger rate. We did a gradual increase, beginning in, I believe, 1617, where we increased it by 50 cents per year. Some of those years that we also had that marketing incentive, and we did have a cruise operator that met the requirements of the incentive, and so that contributed somewhat to that kind of flat, flattening of revenues that you see between 1617 and 1819. Fiscal '20, the, the last quarter was impacted by COVID, as well as all of '21, and the first quarter of '22. So you can see a considerable increase. In fiscal year '23, our TOT revenues exceeded just, I think, just over 1.5 million. The other line just kind of puts it in terms of a percentage of the harbor's overall budget, so cruise ship warfage revenue now makes up about 20% of the operating revenues in the harbor. That's really where we've seen a lot of our growth in the harbor revenues, as the, the cross-channel passenger counts have remained fairly consistent. And again, while we did increase the warfage, we dedicated that all to the capital funding, and so really the warfage rate that goes towards operations has been flat over the last 10 years, and as well as the, the number of passengers more or less visiting. So where we've really seen our growth in revenues in the harbor has come from cruise ship, and that's a combination of the, the higher occupancy on each vessel, as well as the staggering increase we had where we went from 250 per passenger to the current five that the, the city collects. And then just to kind of wrap it up, these are kind of the, the core policies that came out of the last discussion. Generally speaking, the, the number of cruise ship arrivals doesn't exceed three, and it's also in the staff report, is I think the first four bullets there, without approval of the city manager, no cruise ships on weekends without approval of the city manager. And then kind of an exception made for those repositioning smaller cruise ships. And we, we see a few of those, but under 1,000 passengers, we probably see less than six a year. And that concludes my presentation. There was a, a requirement of portion on whether there are any safety incidents. I don't know if it really rose to the level of including, but we did have some issues with queuing over the summer, but those issues, working with the cruise operator and the harbor master, it sounds like those have been addressed.
So the, the $5 warfage, when do we consider, or how long is that in effect, and when do we consider something else, and how does that work?
It's in effect until council directs staff, and then it would go through kind of the normal fee increase process. So it is outlined in our municipal code, so I think there would be multiple readings, but that type of fee is something council could set, so it wouldn't have to go through a voter initiative or anything like that.
Because I know you were talking with them on the last day or two or something, and it might be interesting to hash that around a little bit, because I know we, if we did decide to increase it, we have to give them notice because they say, they set their rates for the, so far in advance for what their fees are.
Right. No, I, I agree. I mean, I think it's something that we're looking at internally, and we're trying to get some numbers as it relates to, you know, the difference between what they pay us and they might pay a, a different city that has a dock versus the tendering service. So we're trying to get that fee, because while the city gets $5, they're actually paying $7, right? Or they will be in April.
They, they will be with the Measure H, and so while, while I view those monies as completely separate from kind of the, the user standpoint, it, it will be going up to $7 per passenger, just two of those dollars go to the, the Measure H funding, the hospital measure.
So what we want to look at is, and, and we're looking at that, is the $7 in April as it compares to other communities to make sure that we're being fairly treated.
Yes, yes. Okay. So we're going to receive and file this? Do we have to make a motion to receive and file? Or just say thank you very much?
I just received, just acknowledged, receipt and file of it, yes.
Thank you. Okay, item seven?
Item seven is the authorization to procure various process analyzers for the wastewater treatment flat, plant, and Bob is here to explain that.
Okay, so this is the last in a series of capital investments we're making in the wastewater treatment plant. Mayor had a question on that two meetings ago, and I keep on saying, we're... and I keep on saying, we're making great investments. These are things that needed to be done, and here we are. So to maintain the plant's effectiveness, it's imperative to invest in state-of-the-art process analyzers. So these analyzers will provide real-time data and control capabilities for key parameters, ensuring optimal plant performance. And this is in the chlorine probes and controllers, the dissolved oxygen DO probes and controllers, and also in the turbidity probes and controllers. And these are all the processes that, as the sewage goes to the plant, it goes through these different things. So we can, the plant personnel can read with a SCADA system real-time what's happening and make adjustments so that we stay in compliance with our permit and that we operate efficiently because there's all kinds of chemicals that we can add, polymers and such. And as we operate efficiently, our costs go down, our energy costs go down. So that's why these are key to have state-of-the-art and to have them functioning right. So real-time data from analyzers will enable proactive adjustments leading to improved treatment efficiencies and reduced operational costs. So that's what we're asking to be done. This is normally, you know, it's just above the threshold of what the city manager has authorization at 25,000, so it's in the 90 or so $1,000 range. So we're asking council to approve this.
Council, questions or what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding that the Hatch Company has satisfied the sole source requirement as specified in the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 3-4.111B.2, authorize Perk Water to procure various process analyzing equipment from Hatch Company for the wastewater treatment plant and allocate funds from the sewer fund 108-25-6552 for the procurement of the amount of not to exceed $89,900.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number eight?
Item number eight is introduction and waive the, all further readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title II, Chapter 2-2, Section 2-2.307, City Manager Powers and Duties of the Avalon Municipal Code to include the appointment, removal, promotion, and demotion of the Office of City Clerk.
Any comments, questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title II, Chapter 2-2, Section 2-2.307, City Manager Powers and Duties of the Avalon Municipal Code.
I'll second.
Moved in second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number nine?
Item number nine is authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the contract for the above-ground fuel tank installation and site remediation project to Jordal Construction, Inc.
Okay, so this is the third in a series of procurement contracts for the fuel tank replacement. This one actually removes the tank, does the remediation, and makes all the connections up. We moved forward with this because we first had to get the tank procured because it was a long lead item. So that was why we broke this up into three different pieces. The other was to get what we thought was the best, the most efficient way to get the enclosure done. And this third, then, as the contractor's there, becomes readily apparent for all bidders, you know, what is left and what is the most efficient way. So that was to help keep the cost down and provide an efficient mechanism to procure this. So one bidder actually bid the project, and that was Jordal Construction, which is the current contractor out there. That was at a cost of $251,750. So staff reviewed the bid for compliance with the solicitation requirements, and it met all those requirements. And it has been determined that it provided good value for the services that we will receive. The one caveat here, the procurement was released as an informal bid. And through, you know, our procurement standards, that is a $200,000 threshold, and the bid came in at $250. City council can still move forward with this if we do comply with Section 3-4.205B.2 of our standards, which says, "If bids, all bids received are in excess of the informal bidding limit, the council may, by adoption of a resolution of a fourth of its vote, award the contract at or below the provisional limit set forth in the code to the lowest responsible bidder if it determines that cost estimate was reasonable." So that's where we're at. And so there's a resolution attached to this, too.
And I would just clarify the action item for council because we just did have the bid opening recently on this, yesterday, I believe. So we would ask council to adopt the resolution. This is before it has been presented tonight.
Well, so I, I don't know. What is the $500,000 that we got from Patrick O'Donnell?
So that was, $500,000 was an earmark through the state legislature.
Yeah.
And that was to help fund the project because we, there is fuel stations that are on the mainland that fit in where there is a set of funds you can go for. We didn't fit that for the island. So that's why we asked our legislator to go and get some additional funds for us because we, special case as usual.
Yes.
So that's what the $500,000 is. And we're adding to that with harbor funds.
And then there's one more phase after that?
This is it.
Okay. So Jordal's going to install?
That will be, yeah, it will be installed, yeah.
Okay. All righty. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number 10?
Item number 10, very exciting. This is a item to authorize the city manager or his designated solicitor requests for qualifications to determine appropriate bidders for a design-build contract for Phase 2 of the Cabrillo Mall Ferry Terminal Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, we're finally here that we're ready to go out and procure the piece of the mall, which is the building, the building site. So city staff has determined the best and most efficient way to move the project forward is through a design-build process. And we had presented that before in our community meetings. And we had Hart Howerton, that design intent that was presented to council and the community. And that would be used as our guide, what our intent is for that, for that team to make a proposal. So city staff are currently developing a design-build request for proposals of the RFP for this project. But the Public Contract Code 22164 establishes statutory measures that must be met in order for us to do a design-build procurement process, being a general law city. So after converging with the city attorney's office, it's been determined that the Phase 2 of the Cabrillo Mall meets those requirements for a design-build. And it, what we need to go through is a two-step process, which is not unusual for federal funding. So you have a request for qualifications, an RFQ. That gets a short list of people that will propose because it's a competitive proposal that there's costs involved for them to put these proposals together. So they'll actually come in, and we'll have some requirements for that, what the minimum requirements for that proposal. And so they can say, this is how, what we would intend, take that design intent, this is what we can build for that, this is kind of the finishes that would be on there, this is the schedule, this is the cost. And so, and so that becomes competitive. And there's different pieces of that that add points to coming to it. And it may not be just lowest cost. There could be other attributes that we can put in there.
Like minority business?
Yeah, any of that. We could add that in there, okay? So, yeah, and that's part of the requirements of federal funding is making sure that you have that. So we're currently working cooperatively with the city attorney's office to develop the RFQ, and then simultaneously, we're working on the RFP. So this step really is to get that first RFQ out so it gets that short list developed. And then we'll be in front of you again as we go forward, trying to get an RFP. So we'll be talking about this as we go through all these steps. This is the first step in that multiple-step process.
Crazy.
Okay, any questions on that?
Then we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony, correct?
Yeah, big pair of scissors.
Giant shovel.
No, that new piece of equipment you have.
Big pair of scissors.
Danny gets to use the jackhammer.
And it's got to be a green ribbon. It's not red in this town. Everything's pure green, right?
Pleasure pure green ribbon.
Right.
Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
It brings me great joy to authorize the city manager his designated solicitor request for qualifications to determine qualified bidders for a design-build contractor for Phase 2 of the Cabrillo Mall Ferry Terminal Rehabilitation Project.
I'll second.
Nobody's called in, Debby? Nobody's texting? No any questions about this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all righty, then, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. There's no further items?
So exciting.
Exciting?
Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas, Tony. Merry Christmas to all.